I'd like to call this meeting a special meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
I'm here.
Mayor Marlin? Here. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is public input. Does anyone wish to address this meeting of the Urbana City Council? I see Brian Dunn.
Hello, my name is Brian Dunn. I'm from Champaign. I see on the agenda here, there will be a draft traffic stop pilot program procedural guidelines. I'm glad that that's something that is being looked over. It reminded me of a meeting from 2017. And let's see, just real quick here. I just want to bring up some audio for everybody to listen to.
African-American drivers, based upon the quarters two and three of 2017, are 62% more likely to be stopped. Is that correct? Okay. So I'd like to know, based upon that 62% of being more likely to be stopped, and based upon the 56% more likely to be stopped over the last five years, what is the economic impact based on those percentages of the African-American community?
So we know, you know, our country and our community's history with segregation. We know how that has led into the Urbana Police Department's explanation as to why African-Americans are being pulled over more instead of just explicitly stating, you know, that they're racist and, you know, that that is a problem in and of itself. And I think that what Erin Amens brings up there is a great point of, you know, it's great to talk about what we're going to do moving forward, but there is obviously a debt that needs to be paid because just the fact that we're making these changes shows that we've been operating in this unjust system for, you know, basically the entirety of the time we've had a police force here. And, you know, I don't think we ever really did calculate the economic impact that this disparity in traffic stops has caused. But I'm sure that in multitudes of occasions, it has severely impacted families. It's probably ruined lives, and it's something that happened along racial lines. So I think that if Urbana wants to take this issue seriously, it needs to explicitly address the racial economic impact that has, you know, been burdened upon the African-American community at the fault of city policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Watkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Watkins. I've lived in Urbana since 1976. I'm speaking because last week there was discussion about the One Door program coming up and listing credentials and trying to dispute some other public comment. The difficulty I see is that this project was introduced and apparently will be run by Urbana Police District. UPD organized it. UPD will apparently be the gatekeeper. If I'm understanding this correctly, UPD refers to, intends to refer to One Door rather than One Door responding, or is calling on police as needed. UPD has been problematical for many reasons lately. The traffic stop disparity, I will be listening to that. The Aliyah Lewis issue, that's still up in the air as far as I know. There's the reported stifling of youth comment in listening sessions mentioned by multiple public comment in multiple previous meetings. And I haven't heard any council response to those reports. This is an issue of trust. I wish you would address if One Door is going to succeed rather than, as some people are being afraid of, is another way for UPD to continue to control too much of Urbana taxpayer funds. So when the council is trying to say one point of view about One Door and not really addressing specific issues raised by specific people or specific groups, that seems to be saying that those concerns don't really matter. And that concerns me. Another matter, I want to thank Ellen Axelrod for his regular reports during public comment. It's one of the reasons I listen to council meetings. That's one of the proofs that our community cares about vulnerable people. And another proof is the township vote, where the voter said by margin that we would increase our taxes for the sake of people who need help. I will be listening for reports on housing issues. There were housing issues, items last week. I hope those plans will be sufficient. But between COVID and winter, I hope you will be ready to add more if necessary. It'll be the right thing to do. And the township vote show that this is what our community wants. So I want to thank you to all public commenters and thank you to the council for considering these matters. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. I want you guys to think carefully why Mayor Marlin is nominating Eric Sacks and what is needed for the problems Urbana is facing right now and in the future. I don't know Mr. Sacks personally and have never interacted with him personally. However, I did hear him speak at the Plan Commission meeting on November 5th, where he spoke in opposition of a very well-thought-out development in my neighborhood. One of his reasons for opposition was quote-unquote, this is what he said, "The student population at the university has essentially been flat for the last 10 years. So there is not a great need." However, he seems to contradict himself while applying for this position when he said that he's a data-driven person and gave numbers regarding the increase of student population by 10,000, by over 10,000 in the last 10 years. I guess what I'm saying is, I don't trust Eric Sacks to represent my ward. I don't trust someone who claims he is data-driven but is willing to use data in a dishonest way to sway decisions. The last thing the people of Urbana need right now is someone on the council who is willing to do that. Once again, please think carefully what is good for the people of Urbana. I don't trust him to represent my ward. Thank you.
Next speaker is Megan McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty. Dear City Council, my name is Megan McDonald. My pronouns are she, they, meaning those are the pronouns I'd prefer you use when speaking about me. And I am a Ward 5 resident. Real quick, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the electoral hearing about two weeks ago. It was a process that hasn't happened in 20 years in Urbana and definitely something I've never experienced or had to participate in. I'd also like to thank the two city council members who showed up to the police union teach-in about a month ago. I hope the information was useful moving forward when considering the Fraternal Order of Police negotiations. I'd like to speak about two agenda items today. Well, firstly, I'd like to speak on three agenda items, so we'll see. But this is the consequence of limiting public input. I first have a letter written and circulated by residents of Ward 5. As members of the historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, otherwise known as HUNA, we are concerned about the increasing number of reports from residents who are worried about the chemical emissions from the Emulsico plant, which is located in our area. The plant has been repeatedly identified as the source of these toxic fumes. Several residents called to complain about the odors, worried that at least one of the smells was escaping gas. Ameren investigated and traced the odors to Emulsico and Asphalt Production Company. People have experienced headaches, nosebleeds, and other concerning respiratory-related symptoms. Some neighbors had to keep their windows shut this summer. We are asking the Urbana City Council, and I know that you're already doing this today, but I'm going to read this letter anyway. We are asking you to recognize this problem and to authorize an inspection of the plant and the property where it is located. We also request a virtual neighborhood meeting with council members, representatives of Emulsico, and someone from the Illinois EPA office. We have seen the mayor's response to this in the HUNA Facebook page, and we are still asking that the city fund or find a source for an independent survey of VOCs in nearby residents' homes for people who would consent to participate. This matter deserves immediate attention since it involves serious health risks for the area residents. Also of concern is the report from the mayor's office saying that Emulsico has expressed their intention to move the plant operations to North Lincoln Avenue, but they say this will take 18 months to do this. It is neither acceptable nor reasonable to expose neighborhood residents to these fumes for such an extended length of time when it's already been going on for years. It is also worthy to note that Emulsico, by their own website, has not had an inspection in two years. Thank you for your time on this. I'm going to move on to my other points. I'm sure you'll have plenty to say about that during the Emulsico presentation discussion, but just know that my neighbors are not going to be pacified into silence when they and their children are suffering. I wouldn't overreach and say that waiting 18 months is reasonable, especially if I didn't live in the ward. Onto the next item, which is racial disparity in traffic stops. I'm not sure where to start. Traffic stops should not have the ability to end someone's life. The traffic stops should not have the ability to incriminate you for another crime. A traffic stop should not make someone fear for their life just because of the color of their skin. I just want to remind everyone that as we allow the chief of police to present today, to think about how we will keep the police accountable on rules, on what they present, and think about why we are letting them make the new rules when the old rules were so clearly broken from the start. We need to keep them accountable for traffic stops for every arrest because every arrest is adding to homelessness, food insecurity, crowded jails in a pandemic, mental health issues, broken lives. When really, we could be using this time and these resources to fix the issues on why people may not have the money to get a taillight or a windshield fixed. And on to the next and final agenda, if I have time. Gender-inclusive language, this is important. Not to say that this is important in a way as if we need to have a presentation and validate whether or not pronouns are legitimate or not. They are. What we're discussing here today is why they are appropriate and important to consider in professional settings. I have worked multiple jobs, a lot at the same time, over my last 10 years in Urbana, and I can say without a doubt the safest places to work with the least amount of turnaround are the spaces where gender identity is recognized and respected. Please let me finish my thought. I know I have five seconds. It's going to take me 10 seconds. As one in 2020, we may hopefully know, gender identity and sexual orientation are different. Gender identity is the gender which one identifies in saying my pronouns at the beginning and including them in my Zoom name. I am signaling to others, perhaps my trans brothers and sisters, that this is a safe space, or at the very least, that I am an ally, a fellow queer person that they can feel a little bit more at ease with. It is a sign of solidarity. Other councils in the country have adopted resolutions similar to this. In California, in Oakland, and Berkeley, the U of I has very strong ties in California. Urbana used to be a progressive place to live. I would like it if we could reroute ourselves back to this line of thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Grace Wilken.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Grace Wilken. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm an Urbana resident. I want to talk about a few agenda items tonight as well and also hope that you're listening to all the previous and continuing public input. The first item on traffic stops, we definitely need to have least accountability and have public access to records to really have any meaningful change, no matter what the policy is. If people aren't held accountable, it doesn't really have any influence. So please seek to protect the people of our community, the people of Urbana especially, our Black Indigenous or people of color in our community. Also on the gender-inclusive language discussion point, this is definitely important for inclusivity and access to things like our public records or participating in our government system. It's also important to include on our forms, if there's any gender questions on any of our forms, I think it's also important to include a non-binary or other option on our paperwork. I think it's important to make the norm of not assuming anyone's gender, so just make it the norm of including pronouns and introductions and on Zoom names and name tags. I'm also wondering how the translations would be affected with the gender-inclusive language. Might be helpful to just avoid third-person personal pronouns altogether. Just saying, you know, for example, the participant can apply by blah, 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 and the participant can do this, and that might be better than trying to have the pronouns translated in all of the software online. And a subpoint on that about having multilingual access. I think our website does look good. From what I've seen of the Spanish translations, it looks like it's pretty well-done and everything's very accessible, written. But I'm wondering also if any of our audio is available in multiple languages, like having the subtitles available for city council meetings, or if there's an interpreter that could be available when necessary, like a community member who spoke at the meeting last week, I believe. It just adds another point of being inclusive in language altogether. The other point about city council member input, I think that's a good idea, sure. I think it would be good to limit yourselves to four minutes per person as well, just like we're holding the public to. I think it's not reasonable to hold the public to four minutes a person and say that it's so that people can be concise and then have council members go on for 15 or 20 minutes on a point. So I would encourage you to hold yourself to those same standards. Also about the One Door program, I think that there definitely needs to be more input and planning, and we need to work towards a holistic and comprehensive plan for emergency responses down the road. I know this is a pilot program, but we still need to have more input and a well-thought-out plan and then think about how this can be a comprehensive solution to emergency responses. Many people, people of color, people with mental health issues, and many others, don't feel comfortable calling the police, and there needs to be a solution for nonviolent emergency response and community support to prevent crime and promote health and well-being. We really need to get at the root of things. There's very limited social services. I see people out on the streets looking for a place to sleep in the freezing cold, and I hate that there is nowhere to recommend them to go. And this really, yeah, we need to have a lot better community access to services. I know a lot of people are working hard and doing what they can, but it's still not enough. So please keep the community well-being in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ellen Axelrod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, going to state up front, I'm multitasking, so if I get derailed, bear with me. So thank you so much to Mayor Diane Marlin and all the other officials who signed an open letter for opposing utility shut-offs about a month and a half or so. We still are in a pandemic. We're still months away from complete distribution of the vaccine, and that's assuming that everything goes according to plan. The federal change in policy as it comes to evictions is irrespective to the following letter that I'm going to read. That is to say, this doesn't address the concerns that we have when it comes to evictions. Eviction cases are in Champaign County right now. So here's a letter that's already been signed by a township supervisor, numerous county board members, as well as several Democratic Central Committee persons. "We, the undersigned, consist of committee, community members and officials in Champaign County or in solidarity with Champaign County, urging for the continued suspension of evictions. Eviction cases are being carried out in the courts in Champaign County today, yet Champaign County stood up as a community back in March to suspend evictions during the pandemic through April, leading the state in pandemic protections. Since then, a blanket ban on evictions has been in effect statewide until recently and with national protection set to expire. Several Chicago-based members of Congress have recently spoken up about the need for such protections in our country. Despite the arrival of the vaccine in our state, the pandemic is much worse now than it was this past spring. We had a, we haven't had a day below 6,000 new daily coronavirus cases from October 27th until today. This disturbing figure predates the, it predates Halloween and the election and has continued long past. As of December 16th, the Illinois, Illinois has suffered 14,509 deaths due to COVID-19, and only 703 intensive care unit beds across the state of Illinois remains available. With over 860,000 cases being recorded since the beginning of the pandemic in our state alone, many residents are already at an increased risk during the pandemic. Also, as of December 16th, the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District has stated that there are 813 active coronavirus patients in isolation and an additional 1,175 persons currently in quarantine. We have only kept our numbers so low because of the unprecedented proactive and collaborative efforts between our local governments and community organizations. The vaccine's new arrival came before the economic recovery. Due to the current and continued economic distress, we need protections that will not go away prematurely as some protections have already done so statewide, especially when some people will get the vaccine before others, leaving many on the waiting list, including our tenants facing the threat of eviction. We are urging for the reinstatement of the complete suspension of Champaign County evictions during the remainder of the COVID-19 pandemic and express our support for statewide moratorium on all evictions for the same duration. Rent debt can be relieved, but lives cannot be replaced. Evictions have already caused approximately 11,000 unnecessary deaths across the country. Please join us in fighting this devastating pandemic without adding another barrier to keeping people safely housed. We end with, quote, "As unemployment and underemployment increase, our neighbors face utility shut-offs, evictions, and food insecurity," from Julie Laut. So the thing that I want to say is that we are going to be distributing this open letter for people to sign. We are updating only two figures on this thing as it relates to the good news that we had today, where we had our first day below 6,000 cases a day since October 26th or 27th. It was 4,000 and change cases. We're not out of it yet. And it took this long just for that number to dip below that really brittle threshold. This is severe. And may I remind you that we still have unmitigated water shut-offs in our community. So we have to act. Please consider signing on to this letter, and I will send an email to you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Deborah Lu.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Deborah Lu. I am a resident of Ward 3 in Urbana. I wanted to comment tonight on the agenda item regarding the traffic stop pilot program. I have two specific concerns about the way that the draft is, the way the draft is written, and I've communicated as such to the chief in an email, but received no response. So I thought I'd talk about it in an open public forum here. My first concern with the way this draft is written is the way that the dangerous intersections or the intersections of concern are going to be identified. I'm reading here from the draft itself. "The crime analyst will use traffic crash data, combining the number of crashes and emphasizing personal injury crashes in order to identify various zones," end quote. My concern with this is that all this really is going to do, in my opinion, is identify intersections with the highest amount of vehicle traffic. The traffic crash data is obviously going to be biased towards intersections which see tons of volume. And I'm thinking, for example, University in Cunningham, right? University in Cunningham sees thousands of vehicles a day. And there's, there's a horrifying number of crashes. So, you know, it bears to reason that the crash, the per capita, so to speak, crash data is obviously going to be tied to the number of vehicles. I'd like to see some language to address the concept of crashes that occur disproportionate to the number of vehicles that go through those zones. I think people who live in neighborhoods all have an intersection in mind that doesn't necessarily see high numbers of cars, but sees a lot of dangerous behavior from vehicle drivers at those specific intersections because of either the way the intersection is designed or because of something about the surrounding environment that encourages dangerous behavior. So anyways, I'm rambling. So that's the first item. The second item I want to talk about, I think that the language is kind of wishy-washy on the way it identifies a dangerous life safety issue. So I'm talking about Point 3 here under the guidelines. The draft language brings up the example of someone who rolls a stop sign near the school and causes two small children to have to jump back from the curb. And then it goes on to say, "A driver rolling through a stop sign near King School at 3:00 a.m., where there are no people or traffic present, would not necessitate a traffic stop." I'm really of the opinion that anytime a driver, for example, runs a red light, which is one of the specific instances cited under Point 3, when there are pedestrians present, is a dangerous life safety issue. And I do think that the draft language needs to be a lot more specific about identifying, about pointing out that when there are vulnerable road users present, whether that's a cyclist, whether that's a pedestrian, you know, if that's an elderly person, if it's a young child, it's not acceptable to run a red light, regardless of if you weren't imminently about to hit them. I think that kind of behavior in the presence of vulnerable road users is completely unacceptable. And I think it's also important to point out that vulnerable road users are disproportionately Black and Indigenous people of color, and those road users are overrepresented in traffic injury crashes. Thanks. That's all I had to say tonight.
Thank you. Next person to speak is Sarah Nixon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, this is Sarah Nixon. And first, just before you start the clock, I have a question for clarification with regard to the two meeting agendas this evening. So in my public comment, I would like to address the issue of the vote that will be held tonight with regard to the vacant city council position, and I would like to offer a comment also about the One Door program. So will I have the opportunity to give a second public comment when the regular city council meeting gets underway?
Yes. This is like a special meeting of the Urbana City Council, and then the last meeting tonight is the Committee of the Whole, and that has a separate public input period.
Thank you. So I will address the question of the vote, then, that will be held tonight with regard to the vacant city council position. So I understand that Mayor Marlin is recommending the city council appointment go to Mr. Eric Sacks. And I would like to ask, how do Mr. Sacks's values and experience reflect and inform the needs of Urbana? When, when giving his presentation at last week's city council meeting, Mr. Sacks seemed fairly to completely out of touch. His statement suggested that he has not audited any city council meetings, at least not this year, and here we are wrapping it up in a few days. And yet, this has been a momentous year in local politics, especially with regard to police misconduct. But Mr. Sacks spoke about things like climate change and other issues that he referred were currently to as issues facing the nation. Now, Urbana has little to no control over climate change and, you know, related policy. But what we need on council is an alderman who cares about Urbana's issues, knows about Urbana's issues, and is active with regard to Urbana's issues. To my knowledge, Mr. Sacks has participated in no city council meetings this year. Yet, Mr. Christopher Hansen, a clear and obvious candidate for this opening, has participated at every single council meeting and every single civilian police review board meeting, and I believe every single Human Rights Commission meeting, just to name a few. In fact, those are just a few of the very long list of qualifications that Mr. Hansen brings to the table. And as you all know, he does not merely participate. He drives change, and he drives reform. Now, last time, last time you had the opportunity to fill this same vacancy, the mayor and the council passed him over, passed over Mr. Hansen in favor of Julie Laut, who served only a few months and who had demonstrated sincere intentions but no prior track record of engagement with city municipal politics and city administration. Nevertheless, the city council passed over Mr. Hansen and voted Ms. Laut in. Because we were told council sought diversity, council had concerns about ushering in yet another, yet another white male alderman. Well, this time, city council has the choice between four white males and does not have that excuse to make overlooking yet again and snubbing Mr. Hansen a second time. We all know that Mr. Hansen is committed to cleaning up abuse of power in politics and policing and is dedicated to ensuring accountability and transparency from the city of Urbana. I believe we need him on council. I believe you need him on city council. And we, the people, certainly need him. And we, the people, certainly need him on city council. Thank you for the opportunity to give input.
Thank you. Um, Wayne Williams.
I, uh, I want to thank the applicants to the Ward Two vacancy as someone who truly believes and, and participates in many aspects of our democracy. I understand how rewarding and also how difficult public service can be. Uh, I'm not aware who is being selected, but to whomever is ultimately chosen, congratulations on your appointment and I look forward to working with you. And while my physical office door is currently closed, my virtual door is always open.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council special meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is the, um, council member appointment for Ward Two. I'm pleased to appoint Eric Sacks to the position of Ward Two City Council Member. Dr. Sacks will complete the remainder of former council member Julie Laut's term, which ends May 3rd, 2021. Eric Sacks has been a resident of Ward Two for the past 10 years. He's an associate professor at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, holds a PhD in genetics from the University of California-Davis, an MS in horticulture from the University of California-Davis, and a BS in plant breeding from Cornell University. Based on his applications and on my interview with him, I've learned that Eric Sacks is committed to a wide variety of priorities, including sustainable, high-quality neighborhood development, promoting development of the downtown and other areas of the city, planning for climate change, working for social justice, supporting high-quality schools, promoting the health of the urban forest through increased tree planting and maintenance. He has experience leading large teams of people with diverse backgrounds to design and successfully implement large projects and encourages the prioritization of long-term benefits over short-term gains. I believe that Eric Sacks will represent the interests of Ward Two well and that he'll make significant and positive contributions to all aspects of life in our community. I would like to thank the four, uh, all four people who applied for this, um, position and I enjoyed, um, speaking with you and I want to thank council members for their input. Is there a motion for this appointment? Bill?
Yeah, I'll move to accept the mayor's appointment of Eric Sacks to Ward Two.
Moved by Bill Brown. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bill Colbrook. Any discussion? Dennis?
Yes, um, this different, the different candidates have different qualities which are valuable to the community. And, uh, I think that in this instance, um, maybe I didn't gravitate to the mayor's choice immediately, but I can appreciate the qualities of this candidate. And I'm willing to give the individual a chance to show his mettle. Um, I think I'm looking forward to the elections, municipal elections, where other of the individuals who have applied will be candidates and their community, the wards themselves, will be able to make a decision of who it is who represents them most clearly, most perhaps, most thoroughly, most progressively, most consistently, however you want to look at it. So, um, that election will be in a couple of months and, um, so, uh, I'll go along with this appointment, um, at this time. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Jared?
Uh, just for the record of whatever it's, uh, it's worth, um, it's always interesting to see the folks that step forward and I'm certainly glad for more candidates. So it's great to see such a, uh, an interest in, in War Two, uh, for the position, considering I think we had to wait until almost a week before, uh, the last time before we even had people who put themselves forward. But, um, I do want to, uh, express that, you know, we may not see another one of these, uh, appointments. I certainly hope that everyone who stays on the council, remains on the council through May, before, uh, the next council gets seated. Uh, but if we were to see one again, uh, I think some of the candidates raised, uh, good issues that, uh, didn't obviously warrant, uh, enough support from the mayor to get appointment here tonight. But, uh, I just want to voice a couple of those, uh, just for the record that I believe that they were, uh, well thought out and well made. Um, one of which was, uh, from, uh, Mr. Edwards in, you know, that we don't have, uh, anyone on council right now uh, from our renter community that lives, uh, in town. Uh, every, every one of us who is on council right now are all homeowners. Uh, and some of us are also landlords. And that's, you know, we, I don't know what the history of council is. I don't know when the last time a, uh, actual student from the university may have been on council. I don't know if that's ever even happened before. I'm not familiar enough with my, uh, with my history, but I imagine it's happened at least once before. But he brought up a very good point, you know, that we, we miss that perspective, uh, without having voices like that, uh, on council and, uh, just wanted to bring, you know, that, that should have, I, I feel like there's, you know, we have an obligation to find, uh, extraordinary representation however we can when making appointments to, uh, to positions, uh, whether that's to council, whether that's to boards or to, uh, uh, high-level, uh, department positions within the city of Urbana. So just something I hope would be considered more strongly in the next time. Uh, and of course, I think, uh, that the dedication and engagement of, uh, candidate Hanson was, uh, was also overlooked. He's participated in every meeting. He might as well be on the city council for his office. He's at our meetings making comments and you know, he watches them from start to finish. And, you know, he participates in every, every bed. And even though we may not agree with his viewpoints and sometimes he has a lot of, uh, harsh criticisms to level against the actions of the city, uh, you know, voices like that are the kinds of voices that allow us to have, you know, the debates and the conversations that we need to really find out what the right way to go forward is. You know, when there's too many consenting voices in any given public body, we lose, uh, that, that level of debate, you know, I'm sure, uh, council member, uh, Colbrook feels that way very often because his views are extraordinarily underrepresented on council. So, you know, again, uh, Mr. Hanson would have, would have offered us another voice, uh, a voice that we don't hear outside of public comments weigh in, in our actual decisions. And I think that that, uh, is unfortunate that it was overlooked. Um, lastly, uh, as always, I have never, uh, stood in the way of the, the majority votes. Uh, I don't feel like anybody who's willing, uh, to vote, uh, or to participate in public service and to volunteer for public service deserves to be told that they shouldn't be to. So you're not going to see a no vote from me tonight. But I did want to express my concerns that, uh, we had two candidates, uh, who I felt were very deserving of, of appointment or consideration that were overlooked this evening. Uh, but I, I look forward to serving with Mr. Sacks and he will get a vote from me tonight. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Congratulations, Eric. And I fervently hope this is the last appointment I make this term. This is the fifth appointment for an elected seat, for council seats and city clerk, which is unprecedented in, I think, the history of three years on the council. Anyway, I would now like to administer the oath of office. We'll do this virtually. Um, and this will be followed by, uh, Eric will ask you to come into the clerk's office, um, sometime next week so you can sign the certificate. But we'll, uh, issue this, uh, oath of office right now. And so please wait, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eric Sacks.
I, Eric Sacks.
Having been appointed to the office of City Councilman, Ward Two.
Having been appointed to the office of City Councilman, Ward Two.
In the city of Urbana.
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champaign, Illinois, of Forsyth.
In the county of Champaign, Illinois, Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of City Councilman, Ward Two.
Of City Councilman, Ward Two.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Urbana City Council and to the seat representing Ward Two.
Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you.
Welcome.
Okay.
Welcome, Eric.
Um, last item on the agenda is approval of the 2021 City Council Committee of the Whole, Boards and Commission Annual Meeting Calendar. Is this the clerk's office presenting this?
Is the clerk's office presenting this? That's another change Charlie made, isn't it?
Apparently.
As you all know, once a year, we do the annual meeting calendar that encompasses all of the committees and the council and everything, kind of meetings that you have. This is set, but it is not set in stone. If there's a need to change, uh, a meeting date or a meeting time, you can always do that. So you all have it in front of you. Is there any changes or any additions that anybody feel like they would like to make to this calendar?
Jared?
I, I have a question. Maybe Dennis can answer this because he might have looked and I didn't realize we had a link in the agenda until now. Uh, but, uh, do we notice if the, uh, Plan Commission and/or, uh, uh, the other, uh, design review board, I think, or no, what am I thinking of?
The Plan Commission.
The Plan Commission.
Was to meet before.
Yeah, zoning board of appeals, EBA, uh, were those, we still know if those are going to come as we meet them too, so that we can have things come to Committee of the Whole based on this calendar?
Well, so I didn't double-check that. It's kind of a pro forma thing and we've been practicing that, um, this year. And I thought probably it would just be automatically applied, but it's a good question. Um, and it would probably be figured out if we looked at, uh, the first Committee of the Whole and rela, rela, related that to the first Plan Commission meeting. It says here that the Plan Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of the month. So if they met on the first Thursday of the month, the, uh, I'm not sure what, what, uh, our, what is our, uh, what is the city council? Okay, the city council meets on the second and fourth and the Committee of the Whole meets on the first. And so actually, we would meet before the Plan Commission. So there is an issue about that, that maybe we need to make an adjustment.
You. Hello. Sharice?
Dennis, are you talking about, okay, because I've heard two different things. The zoning board of appeals or the Plan Commission or both?
Well, I know the Plan Commission definitely and the zoning board of appeals, uh, let's see.
Jared, is that what you're talking about? The zoning board of appeals, the ZBA?
No, I think Plan Commission is the, is, is the one we, we, we need. And it does say in this, uh, in this first and third Thursday after the first Committee of the Whole meeting.
Right.
Yes, um, the zoning board of appeals meets later in the month. Um, I think the real concern is the Plan Commission. That if they, if they move something forward, we want it to come to our Committee of the Whole meeting, not to the city council directly. Sometimes, maybe not every single time, but sometimes. Uh, and so to make it efficient, we were asking, um, asking, uh, are, we flipped our meetings because before the city council met the first, let's see.
You meant the first and third, the city council.
Yeah, right, so, um.
Cunningham township issues.
Yeah, so.
I believe, if I can interject here, I believe the way it's set up, if there's, um, an issue that needs to go to the Committee of the Whole coming out of Plan Commission, it's sent to the Committee of the Whole instead of the next council meeting. But if there's, you know, a more of a routine item that wouldn't necessarily need committee consideration and some things that come out of the Plan Commission are just pretty routine, then it could go directly to the council meeting following the Plan Commission.
Right, yeah.
And that's the way it's set up now and it has been working, to my knowledge.
All right, so, uh, all right, so if the, if the Plan Commission met on the first Thursday and the Committee of the Whole was the following week on Monday, that would be a very fast turnover, uh, but it would allow a week for discussion. So the Committee of the Whole would be meeting on?
You would have 10 days.
So that's plenty of time for a discussion. So perhaps the way it is is fine.
Yeah, and if, and again, if it's a quick turnaround, a routine item, then it can go directly to the city council the following, um, Monday.
An important, an important, uh, decision from the Plan Commission doesn't need to be decided just over a weekend. It needs to have some time for the public to absorb it and for us to consider it before we begin talking about it.
And that's the way it's set up now.
I think we're okay on that. That's a good question, Jared.
Any other comments on the calendar? Okay, can we get a motion to put this, uh, on the floor?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, 2021 City Council Committee of the Whole and Boards and Commissions Annual Meeting Calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll do it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. Any other comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, let's see. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. Uh, with no further business before the special city council meeting, we are adjourned and we'll move on directly to the Committee of the Whole meeting. That's chaired by Jared Miller. Thank you very much.